Good evening, welcome to the fourth meeting of fiscal year 2017 of the Milton Planning Board. I'm Brian Fers, Chairman of the Planning Board. I'm going to ask my colleagues to introduce themselves, starting on my right.
Alex Whiteside, I'm a member.
Michael Kelly, member.
William Clark, Planning Director.
Julie Gatton, Clerk.
Tim Swinski, Assistant Town Planner.
April Lamro, Member.
Cheryl Tagheas, Member.
Thank you. I'd like to make the following motion. I move to enter into executive session to discuss an open meeting law complaint by Kevin Walker. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No, you're going to do a roll call.
Oh, you're right. Thank you, Alex. This is a roll call vote, so I'm going to call each member's name and they will vote whether or not to go into session. So Cheryl Tagheas?
Yes.
April Lamro?
Yes.
Mike Kelly?
Yes.
Alex Whiteside?
Yes.
Brian Fers is yes. We are now in executive session. Are we back? Yes? Okay. So back to our usual business. Our next meeting dates are September 7th, September 22nd, and October 13th. Please note that September 7th is a Wednesday, not our usual Thursday meeting due to the election on September 8th. We have minutes to approve. Does anybody have comments? I have in front of me July 14th, July 28th.
I reviewed the 14th.
14th we approved.
Okay. I was missing last time.
I reviewed the 28th.
Yeah, and the 11th went out this week.
Yep.
So I reviewed the 28th and we have the...
Did you have Mike sign the 14th?
Yeah.
Okay. And he got that back for you?
He did. Does anybody have any comments on the 28th?
There you go.
Nope. Alex, did you have comments on the 28th?
I did, but I gave them to Julia and I think...
Yeah, they were put in.
All right. So motion to approve the... Any more meetings for the 28th? Second? Cheryl or April or Mike?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm saying.
Hey.
I wasn't here.
Eric. All right. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak at Citizens Speak for a non-advertised hearing? Yes, sir, come forward, please.
Good evening, my name's Kevin Walker.
Good evening.
Do you want to use that?
Yeah. I was just going to start off reading a letter. You guys, ladies. My name's Kevin Walker, I live at 1776 Canton Ave, Milton, Mass. And this is in regard to the proposed Carrberry Estate development. I am a direct abutter of the proposed development located at the 46 acre historic KC Farm-Walcott Estate. I've expressed my opposition to this proposed development at two public town planning board meetings, May 26, 2016, and June 9, 2016. I feel obligated to raise various issues and offer the following information that calls into question the planning process thus far. Existing zoning. Under the current zoning, this historic 46 acre site is residence AAA district which requires 80,000 square feet, square feet for a dwelling unit. In addition to this traditional zoning use, the town of Milton passed Article 36 at the annual town meeting held on May 12, 2014 as an amendment to the zoning bylaws to subsection J of Section 6 Cluster Development. This zoning allows increased density for the developer as of right. This bylaw amendment through a public process addresses development of sites not less than 10 acres such as this one. The developer has not presented a detailed plan that conforms to this, to the existing as-of-right zoning. Open land. The developer originally proposed open space of 50 percent. Similar zoning such as Section 6K attached cluster development, which is not allowed in this district, requires open land at least 70 percent. Open land needs to be maintained at the highest level to be consistent with the master plan, neighbor, and current zoning. This is critical to maintaining the character and value of Upper Canton Ave to the town of Milton. The master plan. The master plan states its main goal and objective is to preserve Milton's physical character, preserving and enhancing natural features, historical features, and the individual character of each of Milton's neighborhoods, including the natural and historic features of each. The proposed development does none of this. The master plan states that adopting a great estate's bylaw should be considered for their contributions to the town's character and self-image of large historic homes and their lovely landscapes as they are valued to encourage preservation. Even through this bylaw, even though this bylaw has not been enacted, this proposed development does not represent the intent of the master plan. Architect and design, architecture and design. The proposed development of attached townhouses visible from Canton Ave in its abuttes is not consistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. The homes on Upper Canton Ave are custom and distinct, they also have different layouts and non-repetitive elements. This includes large estate homes such as those on the current property and other New England style homes in the neighborhood. The process. The developer. The developer presented conceptual plan at the planning board meeting on April 14th. The plan proposed 70 new townhouses, five units in existing homes, and 50 percent open space. The developer has stated that this proposed development will require either an amendment bylaw or new bylaw and a zoning map amendment. The town should not consider a development of this magnitude without the developer providing details and elements such as claring required for homes, changes to existing topography, site and landscape features, paving and parking areas, open land calculations, water management, site drainage, proximity and buffering to abuttes, traffic impact, and how the development is going to benefit the town and its residents. The process. The town of Milton. In regards to the proposed development, the planning board has not provided any research, analysis, strategic thinking, urban design, public consultation, policy recommendations, implementation, and management to ensure that the development of the land is in the public's best interest. It appears that the discussions thus far have been what existing zoning or new zoning can be crafted to accommodate this proposed development. The housing production plan. The developer has stated that the use of Chapter 40B planning would be utilized as an alternative to the planning board creating newer amended zoning to accommodate this proposed development. The town of Milton has a housing production plan in place to address the needs of the town and the development of affordable housing. The planning board has not referenced or utilized the housing production plan to address the developer in its statements utilizing Chapter 40B planning to bypass the planning board. In conclusion, based on the above, in what I have experienced thus far, it is my belief that the planning board has allowed the developer to proceed with the development proposal that is not beneficial to the town of Milton and is detrimental to the neighborhood and abuttes. Until it is shown that a transparent process is conducted that addresses all concerns raised by the neighborhood, including myself as a direct abutter, this development should not move forward. The master plan was developed to address the needs of the town and should be followed. Now... So, I got... I got a notice one day for a meeting, so the meeting was last night. Was it one day's notice? The developer had a meeting down at Fuller Village. An email. No flyers, no nothing. This is the developer, reaching out to the community. And he'll probably come here tonight and tell you how he's working. An email, one night from a neighborhood group. So... So this is where we start. We're going to put townhouses in the Blue Hills. Now, Mr. Whiteside, in 2013, in the area that I grew up in, you state, Whiteside said he had been advised not to speak on the project in his role of planning board chairman, but he was speaking as a member of the neighborhood. The townhouses would be inappropriate in a single-family home neighborhood, he said. I'm going to show you the pictures right now. Drive down to Rushell Road, and I know there's architects on this board, and I know that some of them don't do work like this. Garage doors and roofs. I don't care who you show that to. That's, that's the developer that's going to put townhouses in the Blue Hills. This is the developer that threatens 40B. You need to get a consultant on board and find out what these threats mean, because it's going to keep happening. They're going to keep coming, and it's time that everybody gets treated fairly. Okay? You own your house for years and years, and you take a good, you do take care of it. Okay? Are you entitled to turn it into an apartment house? As, as they said, he was a, the Carrberries took good care of it for 46 years. So now you're going to throw up 60 townhouses that are going to look like this? I mean, that's it. They shot themselves in the foot. This is, this was their chance. They put a little copper over the garage. They got neighbors looking into neighbors' windows. I mean, this is Architecture 101. I watched some of, some of the videotapes of the people here when they ran for this position, and I heard how the master plan was going to be used, how they were going to plan, not react. And this is what we get. This is, this is our property here. Okay? So it just keeps, it's like the same thing. And, and he gives one day's notice for this new schematic, and then he comes up with the new conceptual cluster plan layout. Where's the one that's allowed under zoning? Bring us the one that's there. Start with that, or start with what's allowed. Okay? I'm not against developing, but look, we're taking out the homes. Why not leave the KC Farm home? Build some estate homes, have it blend in. Some shingle houses. Architecture. So when you're driving down, it doesn't look like, oops. Drive in there. What are those people going to be looking at? I'm telling you. I said to them, he's got my number. First, I wanted something. I wanted land, I wanted money. To look at this? And I've heard people on this board say, the developers, you're going to be hearing from the developer. In the city of Boston, you have to hand out flyers in an area, and you have to sign an affidavit, and you've got to have enough time. And they're sponsored, some of those are sponsored by the BIRA and some aren't. And then they bring someone in. The city of Boston doesn't get threatened. You know, if this developer's here in good faith, you know, he's going to make money, but it can't be slam bam, 60 townhouses up there and, and they're going to look like that. Someone's going to start over here. Okay? Because I'm just going to keep coming. I'm going to get an environmentalist, I've contacted the DCR. I'm going to keep coming, because I know what you said. My neighborhood is as good as your neighborhood. And I've heard the videotapes. Take a step back and tell them, listen, there's nothing wrong with developing, okay? But it's time to be transparent, do a five or 10 day notice for a meeting, and sit down and have a discussion of what's appropriate, what's going to look nice. I mean, it's that simple. I got a shingle house with a red bond, and I'm sure everybody here has nice houses, okay? And what's funny is, this is, this is how transparent this has been for me. He did all these angles. They're going to do a balloon test. He's going to tell you about a balloon's going to go in the air. Okay? This is this angle to Carrberry Lane. They don't even outline my property here. Oh, they got it going this way, they got it going this way, they got it going this way. Oh geez, they missed my house. They didn't include my house, how, what the topography's going to look like. They don't mention that this is all ledge. I hear, this is all ledge, this has never been farmed, and now you're getting closer to Walcott Park. It's, it just goes on and on, and he's going to come and tell you. Smoking mirrors. That's reality. That's reality. Your door, your garage doors are getting some nice sun, and when it's all done... I drove there Sunday, couldn't believe it. Look at all the architectural shingles. The dormers, where are they? Whatever. Well, I appreciate your time, and somebody's got to step up here. If you don't have, I was going to bring the master plan, it's this thick, you got all this stuff, you got the housing production plan, don't, don't be held hostage, you know? And at the same time, developers should be able to come into this town and do a good project and make money. Okay? I'm a developer, there's nothing wrong with it. But they can't dictate to the planning board, because you're planners, and you have a job description, it's on the website. Thank you, and have a good night.
Okay, is there anyone else who would wish to speak to any items that are not advertised for a public hearing or new world business tonight? No? Okay. So that's, with that, we're going to move on to our public hearings, which were scheduled to begin at 7:05. So we have a 7:05 public hearing for One Kinseale Lane subdivision revision continued from August 11th. Mr. Corcoran, you are recognized.
Good evening. Thank you. Ned Corcoran, on behalf of Dennis Cohane, One Kinseale Lane, I'm asking that this matter be further continued. Alex is sharing comments to the draft of the Homeowners Association Trust that I need to review and have a chance to get back to the board. I haven't, we haven't had, I haven't seen those comments, specific comments yet. We have an exchange of emails and a conversation on Tuesday, and so we need time to review what might be appropriate in terms of other comments, so I'm just asking for a couple of weeks.
Happy to continue it. Do, is there any need to discuss it amongst the board first?
I'm not prepared to tonight.
Fine, we'll continue it. So, Tim, we know we're booked on the 7th, so...
1/31.
No, so we're booked on the 7th. So we're looking at the 22nd, I think, at this point?
Right, the 22nd, we have, I don't have my future agenda.
Well, chances are you're going to wind up having 1/31 come back, you're going to have Pulte come back.
And the Burke project is on the 22nd.
Burke project's on the 22nd for...
That's Ned.
Yeah. Is it, is it possible to schedule five minutes on the 7th? Because I think if we get there, it'll be quick, and if it's not, we'll further continue it.
What time is our first hearing scheduled for?
11:15.
We can schedule you for 7:10, and if it's not quick, we will ask you to go.
That's fine. I appreciate that.
Okay.
And I would expect it'll either be quick or will not.
Fine.
We, the latest plan is dated July 28.
Right.
And we are going to treat that as the date of application.
Date?
Of application for this subdivision revision, because there are, there are dates that we have to act by.
Oh, well, the hearing hasn't closed, so I'm happy to sign whatever is necessary to allow the matter to continue.
I think that, isn't it from the application?
You have to conduct a hearing so many days from the date of the application, and then you have to vote so many days after the close of the hearing. We've opened the hearing on time and we've kept the hearing open. I don't think that we're running into any issue.
I guess I have...
They've asked for the continuance.
I guess, you know, it's with a, it's from the end of the hearing.
Yeah, it's, you have 60 days from the end of the hearing to vote, I think.
Okay, that's fine. So we'll see you on the 7th, and I'll talk to you before then.
We may have a little problem with the 7:10 thing, since Ned really isn't going anywhere. It's sometime between that 7 and 7:15. We'll make the announcement in just a couple of minutes as to where. I know there's something else coming.
What time it's going to be continued to? You want to do it at 7:05?
Exactly. I don't know what time it is. Tim went to get...
A 7:10 period open?
No, something tells me we have something else scheduled in there. I just want to hold off saying the exact time until I have the sheet in front of me.
All right.
It will be noticed.
Why don't we move to, continue this hearing to September 7th at a time to be announced prior to the end of this, this meeting tonight?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Anybody? Favor? Aye. Okay. Don't go anywhere, Mr. Corcoran. 7:10, Dennis and Martha Burke, special permit for cluster development, 245 Highland Street, and Scenic Road permit application, 245 Highland Street, continued from August 11th, scheduled for 7:10 this evening.
Yes, and I, the Burks are conducting conversations with the neighborhood around the modified plan to seven units. This is the end of summer, people returning from vacations. We'd like to continue to September 22 to give that, all that discussion time to, to occur, and so we would ask to continue to a time on September 22nd.
45?
I don't think we have any date set for the 22nd yet.
Oh, okay, so...
Put it where you want it.
All right, well, that's fine. And if we don't have, that's true, we haven't even heard the other two.
As close as we get to a stop the presses moment. We have, on the, on the 7th, we've got Milton Burke Place Site Plan Approval at 7:10, so we should probably schedule it for a different time than that.
Okay, 7:05.
Yep.
Right.
Sorry, Mr. Corcoran, continue. Yeah, you're looking for continuance, just September 22nd, and we'll move that to 7:15.
For Burke.
Looking for, so moved, a second? Any discussion? Oh, I didn't get a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Cooking with gas. 7:15, Pulte Homes, special permit for cluster development, Milton Woods Town Farm Site, continued from August 11th. We have a request for continuation to September 7th at...
7:45.
7:45.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. Got our public hearings cut off.
So hearings are gone, does that mean?
That means we have an A and R.
Yeah, we do, let's go back to our A and R, so we can get our new business done. We'll get to, all right, A and R. So we have an A and R for 52 to 64 Cushing Road, applicant is Paul Fugazato, did I say that right?
That is correct.
All right, great. Mr. Fugazato, you're recognized.
My name is Steve DeRoche, Napotsa Valley Survey Associates. Our offices are at 95 White Street in the city of Quincy, and I'm here to present this plan this evening to you. Mr. Fugazato, and I do it real quick. He would like to add on to his garage, but he didn't have enough room on the side there, so he's made an arrangement with his neighbor to take a strip of land 20 feet wide by the length you see on the plan, and he's going to give up a piece in the back 20 feet wide. So basically, it's, it's, it's a land swap. The, both lots are still going to maintain the area for the, you know, for the housing, I mean, for the zoning there, and they're both going to have the frontage, so we're not diminishing anything.
All right, let's... Plan does have the locusts, it does have the language that we specifically request each time, which are under the notes. Does have the owners, does have the zoning district, has the plan references.
It has the frontage.
And it has the frontage and the abuttes.
And where's the garage? Oh, that garage is at 35.5 feet?
That's existing there today, and they're going to, he's got a plan he wants for our own.
Put another stall on. Well, that sounds like a good plan.
Can you say that? We're in a meeting. All right.
I would move that we authorize Mr. Clark...
Actually, we have a...
I would still authorize Mr. Clark to execute his plan on behalf of the board as not requiring subdivision approval. That way, we don't have to all sign the plan, he can do it.
No, thanks.
I second that motion.
Easy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, folks.
You're welcome. I am going to suggest that we quickly get an update on the 131 Elliott Street project before we go into the old business. Is that from Mr. Swinski or Mr. Clark?
There was a community meeting last night hosted by the Board of Selectmen regarding the 131 Elliott Street Central Ave PUD special permit application. The planning board will be hearing that in a public hearing on September 7th at 7:15. The purpose of the meeting was to reintroduce the town and the community and the neighborhood to the project. I think everyone is aware of the Hendry's Building and that project. It's, it's loomed over the town for quite some time. There's a new application for a special permit after the zoning changes at the February town meeting in 2016. So we, we have an application. That application is actually, all those materials are posted on the planning board website if you want to get a look at them electronically. We'll have hard copies out to you at the normal time in advance of the September 7th public hearing. Katie Conlon, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, gave a presentation about the history of the site and a little bit about, basically, the history of the project and some of the, the ideas behind the town's transfer of property. The town owns the lot that's closest to the train tracks in the northeast portion of the site. There was the Carrick Realty Trust's demolition contractor to answer some questions about the demolition of both buildings that would have to happen before a new mixed-use project could go up. And then I gave a short presentation about the, the actual application, and I went, it went just fine. There were some good questions from the public. I think people are, are paying attention to this one. It's obviously going to be a pretty high-profile public hearing, but there were some good questions from, from the neighborhood. And that was, that was filmed by Milton Access TV, and it'll be on the, on the website if you all want to watch. But yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. All right. I'm going to move on to the Canton Avenue, and you see the two applicants back there speaking. Is there a question about order? Or can we go in order as shown on here? All right, we're going to start with the discussion on the Ice House project. Mr. Corcoran, you're recognized.
Thank you. Just a quick update. We had a meeting, a neighbor meeting at the, at the library on Tuesday evening, not heavily attended, but it was attended by several of the people who have been most vocal in the I know that Tim hasn't had a chance to really dig into the issue of a friendly 40B approach. I'm also thinking about the notion of a variance. The planning board would have jurisdiction of the site plan approval. The planning board would have jurisdiction of the site plan approval, so that if we did a combination of a variance and a site plan approval with the two boards, you could arrive at an outcome that people would be willing to support. There was a fairly general consensus of those at the meeting the other night that the mixed-use proposal is a good outcome, and the question is how to get to that outcome. Particularly getting at details around how do you integrate improvements to the parkway if necessary to make the parkway safer, make the access, make the crossing of the parkway safer and whatnot. So if the friendly 40B approach doesn't work because technically it doesn't fit within what's allowed under the regulation, I think a variance approach with the support of the planning board and the selectmen could be a good alternative. And so I may be recommending that as an alternative as we go forward. I need to get a better sense of consensus, and then my clients have to actually find someone to come on board as a development partner and spend the money to arrive at all of the details necessary to get to a permit. I, you know, I think there's some risk currently of just moving forward to Town Meeting with a somewhat specific but still somewhat vanilla bylaw. That you would then take a bylaw and move forward on a development, I think with enough support, a more concise, direct approach to a permit process could be, would work, I think, best for all involved. So I'm going to keep moving on that. The next neighbor meeting is going to be, I think is going to be hosted by the Tucker Neighborhood Association. Cheryl Flightman and I have been in conversation about picking a date, looking at, we hope, September 19th, Monday, at the library. And if I get a separate date earlier than that, I will let the board know.
Okay.
That's the update on that.
Thank you.
The next item, I guess, is 1672 Canton Avenue. I wasn't sure that this was on this evening. I know that Jack had had a separate conversation, I think, with Bill about putting it on for September 22. We did have a meeting last night at Fuller Village with a number of near our neighbors and abutters. We've had, and we had a meeting in one of the homes two weeks ago on Carberry Lane. So there is a mix of consensus on unit count and other development. We have a significantly refined set of plans that we're looking forward to presenting to the board, but we want to keep moving forward to the extent that we can with conversations with neighbors and abutters first. One of the things that we are considering, and so I'd ask the board to just think about, there's a project in Weston that was done by another developer, I think it's Weston Highlands. It's a similar type of attached townhouse cluster development that was done and done very successfully. In that case, as part of a zoning, rezoning effort, the developer entered into an agreement with the Board of Selectmen, outlined all of the details that would go into the plan, the requirements for mitigation, et cetera. That was some of the conversation with some of the abutters and with Tony Chikello, who represents a small group of the abutters, has been around creating a written agreement to memorialize things that come together through conversations with the abutters. Problem is, who signs it on the abutter's side, and how is it enforceable? Because unless all abutters sign it, it's really not enforceable, and it's not a recognized entity. But if it's signed by the Board of Selectmen, then becomes, on behalf of the town, it becomes enforceable by the town, and it sets out very clear sets of requirements. I did talk to Katie Conlin about that. She's asked me to forward a draft that we have given to some of the, well, all of the abutters who have been to meetings have now have a draft. We would forward that to her so that she could have Town Council look at it and figure out whether and how it might work. And so we'll be doing that in the next few days. So that's the...
April 1st.
So if we don't have a plan, the board is reviewed, how does this, how do we know what mitigation the selectmen are agreeing to? And why would they be the body to enter into that agreement?
I think we would, well, we're going to move forward with the planning board on the 22nd. And in fact, we know that between now and middle of November, we have to hope to have a draft of a bylaw ready to be submitted for Town Meeting Review in February. And we know we have work to do with the planning board. We want to do, we've got a lot of work to do with the planning board. What we're trying to do is, you know, we're assembling and receiving and responding to all of the comments that we've received from the abutters. We now need to bring that forward.
So as my understanding is that the process would work through the planning board, but rather than go to Town Meeting, it would be the Board of Selectmen who would be the ones to make the decision?
No.
I'm confused how this works.
Well, that's a, and that's a good question. The planning board is still the entity through which the zoning and the site plan would be presented into Town Meeting. If there were, if there's an agreed upon, I guess the planning board will be involved in reviewing the plans and recommending approval of the agreement, if there is an agreement, that would be signed by the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town. The selectmen are the only entity that I know that can sign agreements on behalf of the town.
So why was this used in Weston, and why is this appropriate here? I'm not following it.
It was used to memorialize commitments made by the developer in the pre-zoning process.
So you're saying mitigation?
Unit count setbacks.
Why wouldn't that come through the process with the planning board? I don't understand.
We could incorporate the letter, but this would be prior to the hearing.
Right.
There would be a letter saying, "This is what we want, and this is minimum."
I still don't understand why that process is the right, a good process here.
That's how I feel, too.
It hasn't been explained well enough for me to understand why this would be a good process here.
Well, because the neighbors will know going into the hearing.
But then we don't, we don't write a special permit, then.
Yeah, you do.
We do write a special permit, but we put in the letter.
Absolutely do. All you do is, it's a general description of all of the things that will be coming through the special permit process, but starts with minimum setbacks.
But why are the selectmen the ones deciding that? That comes through us.
It also becomes an extra bit of enforceability. We don't need it. We're proposing it as something that worked in Weston. If it's something that Town Council and the boards collectively come to that may be a reasonable way to help achieve an outcome, that would then come through the zoning and then the special permit process following, it's just another piece of...
I think, I think, I'm going to try to get some thoughts on what I think you're asking, what he's answering, and where it's going in my mind. I think what you're getting at is, or it appears that the developer is giving us some kind of special concessions, where in fact, if they come before the planning board, we're going to require those concessions either way. So it's like, I'm trying to put in simple terms. Don't do us any big favors, because we're going to hold you to it anyway.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand, if it's in lieu of coming to us, and if it's not in lieu of, then what's the benefit of doing it with the Board of Selectmen rather than the process that's normally done?
It makes the developer look like he's doing something special for you when we're going to hold him to the requirements, whether he does something special or not.
The planning board, you know...
That's the best I can get out of it.
At the beginning of the process, you haven't had the hearing, you don't know what the planning board is going to do. If you have an agreement between the town and the abutters saying, "This is what we want in the special permit," then going into the hearing, the abutters are going to, I mean, the abutters will be...
What do we need us for, then?
That's exactly my question.
We're elected. The abutters aren't elected to make these decisions.
On this agreement, they can't give more than the bylaw allowed, or any of the bylaws are allowed.
You see, they can't make an agreement with us because we don't have the power to contract.
But what if we decide that what they've come to an agreement on is inappropriate?
Then there's no special permit.
Then we don't have an agreement, because if you don't agree that...
But if the Board of Selectmen can make decisions for the town, can they...
Not without the input of the planning board.
I'm confused why this is a good thing, so...
They're the chief executive. They get to make the decisions for the town. We can't sign a contract.
But why, I don't understand why a contract is required when we're talking about zoning. The planning board is...
In a simplistic way, the rules are already spelled out, so why are you giving us judgment on the rules ahead of time?
Right.
I mean, if you say, well, you can have X number of units, well, bylaws already restricted X number of units.
You might show us a copy of that agreement, and let's see what it looks like.
Yeah, maybe that would be clarified.
Well, my concern is that, for example, we have another project that has been before us as informational, where there's an agreement with neighbors, and there's a lot of things that don't meet standards, whether it's technically a waiver or some other thing, width of the roads, lack of sidewalks, et cetera. And because that is worked out with the neighbors, then is the planning board supposed to say, "Well, the neighbors dictate, so we have to go along"?
No, we can't.
No, right. So that my point is, if that's the case, then why would you have something which dictates all of that handed to us? I don't know the advantage of it.
I don't understand either. You got the bylaws. If you, like, the example you just used, the neighbors agree the road has to be 12 feet wide. Well, no, it can't be 12 feet wide.
To me, it sounds like you're getting an agreement with the neighbors, almost to have the neighbors saying, "We're going to not oppose you as long as you stick within these minimums." So that's really an agreement with the abutters on this, on the premise of, "We don't want to waste our time and money if you're going to show up and fight with us."
It's going to be...
But it has nothing to do with us.
It's, in my mind, from what we just discussed, it sets up an enormous battle.
I think so, too.
Because what Ned just said, if every neighbor doesn't sign it, then it's not an agreement. But the selectmen can sign it. Well, if the selectmen sign it, and eight out of 10 neighbors thought it was good, but two to hundred neighbors don't, then they're going to be betrayed by some special agreement by the town.
And I just, I really do feel like it undercuts the public process to enter into some sort of agreement with a governmental body before we even have a hearing. And I understand why there's advantages to the developer. I mean...
It almost sounds like a violation of the open meeting law.
I'm suggesting it because this notion came from the town of Weston.
And there could be a number of reasons why that worked there.
And it seemed to work. And so we just thought, okay, worthy of discussion here.
Why don't you show us the contract?
I will send you a copy of it. Got a draft of it that I've shared with the abutters, I've shared with others. If there's a collective sense that it's a good idea, maybe it will work. We can live without it. We don't need it.
May I suggest that our chair speak with the Chair of the Board of Selectmen to understand the pros and cons of such arrangement?
Are the selectmen even aware of this at this point?
One of the selectmen is aware of it, yes.
Who happens to be the chair?
Happens to be the chair.
Look, you're absolutely right that the, in the end, the planning board would make the decisions, and the contract would have, they could not contract away our rights as a board.
No, but my concern is, it's a way of, it just smells of one board saying, "We want you to do this, planning board," and if the planning board doesn't do it, now the, you know, the bad planning board ruined another project in the town of Milton.
Well, it started out in the right way. If 100% of the abutters and all the neighbors decide, "These are the parameters they'd like to work to and they're very happy with," then that would be something to bring to us. But to say that, "Well, we can't get all the abutters, so we're going to have the selectmen sign it on their behalf."
But if so, to me, like, how do you define the abutter, and how do you define affected parties?
Mike, you may have thought that way. That is absolutely not even remotely close to the purpose for which we're suggesting that.
Then I, all I'd suggest is that your concept in the first place was a good concept, that have all the abutters sign that these are the parameters that they really can stand behind, and that would help influence me as a planning board member to...
During the public hearing process.
In the public hearing process, to understand that there's a way we can get something done.
One of the things that...
Sorry, Tim had a quick question.
I was just going to say, I don't know if you're familiar with the concept of community benefit agreements, which are, they do them a lot in New York.
They do them in Boston.
For much, much larger, Boston has them, where it's basically sort of that pre-negotiation between a developer and a neighborhood, where it's basically the tit-for-tat is, "We won't, we will publicly support a project in exchange for mitigation benefits of some kind." And it's not, that's a contract between those folks, independent of any kind of regulatory decision-making body. I mean, I would have to read the Weston agreement that Ned's referring to, but I mean, it sort of sounds like that's a little bit...
That makes sense.
But my concern is that it takes the Board of Selectmen and puts them in the position of saying to the planning board, "This is an agreement that we signed, you do this." And I think that's, that has to be carefully thought out to see if that's a good thing to do, because I feel as if that there's a process that's set up for zoning changes and reviewing projects, and that process involves taking public comment, and this board being the one that hears the comment, that hears from the project proponents, and then discusses the pros and cons of various things, that there might not, we're not a party to these meetings that the abutters and the developer are having, and we don't know what's been presented. So we don't have, do they fully understand the storm drainage, for example? Do they fully understand the roadway safety concerns, or whatever they are? So they've signed on to something before we've even had a chance to discuss it. And that seems like a faulty process.
You made the point at the very beginning of that, and that is, if the developer's going to make some kind of agreement with the selectmen, well, that's not the whole town government that's been set up. The planning board is set up to make those agreements with developers. But beyond that, what Tim brought up, got back to what I said, not as educated as you expressed it, but if you want to come to us and say that we have parameters here, that the developer has sat down with the neighbors and all the abutters, and they've all agreed that these are a good set of parameters, then I think that would be an excellent document. How the selectmen get involved is beyond me relative to the conversation that Cheryl's had.
I would just caution you that we have two other applications right now. One is, they're both before us. One is, has a neighborhood agreement. It's actually not an application, but it's a discussion before us. There's a neighborhood agreement in place with the developer, and the planning board is being asked to respect the agreement. And the, you know, there's another application in town where there's a purchase and sale document that's being asked to sort of dictate the planning board. And in both cases, I think the planning board is saying, "Well, do our, you know, we're going to rule on the merits of the application." So, you know, I just caution to...
That's fine. I threw that out because it's something that has come to us as potentially an idea to use. Discussed it with some of the abutters, we've discussed it. If it were the right thing to do, would be only done after this board has reviewed the process and has at least put forward a bylaw. And the notion would be that there would be an agreement that the town would then be able to enforce if the developer tried to go sideways after zoning was passed before the special permit.
So I think we'd all like, let's move this along. Let's see a copy of it. If you want to circulate it, you're welcome to do so, and we can discuss it again on the 22nd.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand, I thought you said earlier that it would be before a public hearing. Did you just say now would be after a public hearing?
No, I don't think I said it was bef...
Okay.
I don't think I ever said when it would be signed.
Okay.
I think it would be signed when everybody was comfortable that it should be signed, if at all. It'd be signed before Town Meeting.
So let's all look at it.
Okay.
Because I think it'll be easier to have a more educated discussion after we actually see what it says. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have, next on our list, discussion on Wentworth Farm Cluster Development Proposal.
Good evening. I'm Amy Catrick, represent the applicant. And this is a continuation from our last meeting, in particular to discuss the concept of a modification, which the planning board is allowed to do, the way the cluster zoning bylaw is written, of the requirement that the one affordable lot created is part of this development, because there are 10 lots proposed. There's no application that's been filed. This is just the concept that we're talking about. And then further, to further that discussion, the question of what payment the planning board might require if it were to allow that alternative. And so I, at the last meeting, I asked the planning board to try to come up with a payment amount. amount, because it's quite important for the developer to understand that, to see whether he can manage whatever the planning board wants him to do, if they're willing to allow that in lieu of creating a lot. And they also asked me, you also asked me to give you my thoughts on that, so I tried to do that. I did prepare a memorandum. And did you all get copies of that beforehand? Okay. And it's a three-page memorandum, which I'm looking for at the moment. I also have notes from the Milton Animal League meeting, Animal League Subcommittee meeting, and they're all mixed together, so. Do you want me to recap this a little bit, or shall we have a discussion and have you had a chance to go through it? I don't want to bore you by, you know, just sort of restating what's here, but I'm happy to discuss it, go through it section by section.
Re-located version?
Sure, that's fine. I think the point that I wanted to make, starting out here, is that the cluster zoning bylaw, as we currently have it, 2014 version, is a rewritten version. It's now a planned unit development approach. And a planned unit development does or can, state law allows a town to allow greater density in a planned unit development, but there must be public benefits that are provided by the development. And the bylaw enumerates what the purposes of this cluster zoning bylaw are in the first section, and that's what I listed here at the beginning of the memo. So the purpose of the bylaw is to create a cluster design mixing dedicated open space, owned in common, or by a separate entity, permanently restricted open land, a careful design process protective of and in keeping with the neighborhood, and a design that's an improvement over conventional subdivision design and preserves views, is compatible with existing terrain, promotes visual and audible privacy, and fits in with the surrounding neighborhood. And I haven't presented an application yet, but I have written an application, and there's a great deal of detail in that application about why the cluster development proposal for 10 lots off Hillside and Ford Ranch Road does meet the requirements of, does meet the objectives of the bylaw. The bylaw also has many requirements. I think you just alluded to some, you know, not specifically, but mentioned earlier that this application is not perfect in terms of the way it meets the requirements of the bylaw. So a number of the requirements we will be requesting modification for, and I have given the board summary, and I did last week, or two weeks ago, go through a list of all of those modifications, again, because it's been a while since we first talked about them. But primarily tonight, what I want to talk about is the requirement to create an affordable lot, if you have 10 or more lots. And we would be intending to ask the board to modify that requirement, as the bylaw allows you to do, at the end, when it talks about how the planning board makes a decision under the cluster zoning bylaw, for good cause. And in this case, in order to allow the development to go forward, but instead, to then allow the development to make a payment into the Affordable Housing Trust. And the question is, what should that payment be? And I know you've had a lot of discussion about this, and you will be continuing to do that. I know that there is zoning currently, zoning changes for 48 being considered by the legislature. I know, I guess they didn't pass this session, but I assume they'll be returning to those, that would allow more flexibility for towns, will allow a planning board, if the town, I don't know if the planning board would do it directly, or the town would have to vote at town meeting, but in any case, could allow a town to impose what we call exactions on all developments, so that you would be able to obtain some contribution for affordable housing. That's not yet implemented, so in Milton right now, it's only with cluster development and PUD zoning that we've written in these requirements. And all of these developments have been different. So with a high-density development, higher-density condominium development, some developments have been able to create units, according to what the zoning requires. We haven't had a situation where the planning board has, a development has been built that had a payment. So, you know, it's kind of an open question as to what would be a fair and reasonable payment under the circumstances. So what I did here was an example of a way of thinking about it. And the, you know, the end result was a proposed payment of $61,500 or something like that. But what I did was, I took the original $149,000 number that the assistant town planner began discussion with, after the board asked him to do some research on what per-lot payment might be. And I applied mitigating factors. I applied three principal reasons why I felt that the amount should be reduced, excuse me, reduced for this development, which has only 10 lots. So if you go to page two of my memo, you'll see that the first factor that I wanted the board to think about was, if you started with a base payment of, for a lot that would otherwise be required to create a development, required to create one lot, that you might consider proportionately reducing that payment, because the one-lot requirement applies not only to a 10-lot development, but a 10-to-14-lot development, because of the way the bylaw is written and the way, at what point you decide that they have to create two lots rather than one lot. In fact, originally, I thought maybe it was only when you reached 20 lots that you had to create two. But on rereading and so forth, I think that it's at 15. So I suggested that the payment amount be reduced from $149,000, 10% for each lot less than 14, that the development was proposing, the 10-lot development. In this case, would be reduced by 40%, so from $149,000 to $89,400. The second factor that I suggested you consider is that you consider reducing the payment amount, in this case, because of neighborhood support. And basically, I've talked about this before, but this development is, and I want to caution you, by the way, there is no intricate development agreement that has been signed by the neighborhood, you know, all the neighbors and the developer. What has happened, though, is that there's been a more than a year-long process of discussion, after a great deal of dissension and issues about how this particular site could be developed, and after the failure of an original three-lot open-space development proposal, when the planning board denied that proposal, the neighbors opposed it. Subsequent to that, condominium zoning was looked at, 40B zoning was discussed, all of this in the neighborhood. And all of the higher-density proposals were very much opposed by neighbors. And, you know, things seemed to be not progressing very well, until finally, a group of neighbors asked to sit down once more with the owner and the potential developer, to see whether something couldn't be done with the concept of single-family housing, which is what the neighborhood really felt should be in place in this location. And that's how the 10-lot proposal was generated. But it was only generated after a number of discussions and meetings, with a number of neighbors who have some background in development and in engineering and so forth, and with a developer who had experience in the cost of development, to reach this 10-lot proposal as a feasible proposal that could generate enough profit, but would not hurt the neighborhood, would be consistent with development that already exists in the neighborhood. So the agreement with the neighbors was for 10 lots, was for, you know, for 10 lots, and that is an agreement that's been signed, you know, abutters have agreed not to oppose it, to support it or not oppose it. It is true, the Board of Sluggman has written a letter also supporting that concept of 10 lots. It's not a development agreement that goes into all the details, and we're always very careful in talking about this. I only came in at the end, but I always said to everyone, the planning board has the authority to decide whether or not to permit this project. And in fact, they didn't know for sure whether it was gonna be Planning Board, a Board of Appeals, or other town boards. The Conservation Commission will exercise considerable control. So you, it is your decision. And on this question of affordable payment, it is your decision. But anyway, that's the second factor. The third factor, which I've already referred to, is that I feel that you should give some consideration to reducing the payment amount, because of prior good-faith efforts to put forward a developer proposal for the site that was less dense, was only for three lots, and simply did not succeed at the time, didn't get neighborhood support at the time, and didn't get the support of the planning board. That's not, I understand you're not the same planning board members, and I'm not saying that, that's the way things happen sometimes. But a good deal of time was devoted to that effort. That's when I first became involved with this proposal. It seemed like the right way to go, and sometimes the right way doesn't succeed. So this is the next best, it's a compromise, basically, and still, one that I think protects the character of the neighborhood and so forth. There are also, in addition to that three-lot proposal, has been an A&R proposal for one lot out of this land. That land has now been removed. The planning board approved that lot. But it was appealed by neighbors, and it not only went to Superior Court, it went to the Massachusetts Appeals Court. Two years were spent litigating for that one lot. And, you know, there's been considerable expenditure for all of these efforts. As, I mean, I don't have to tell you, because a lot of you are, you know, work in this field, but you spend a lot of money on engineers, you spend money on attorneys, you spend time, and you continue to pay the taxes on the property and so forth, what are called carrying costs. So I feel that these are factors which you could use to modify what you feel would be an appropriate payment in lieu of one lot. I've given you this particular scenario to consider. I think if you wanted to consider these factors, you could weight them differently. You might have other factors in mind. But I think there is a way to do this that's fairly systematic. I think that each development you look at is going to be different. And so, for example, in a development that fits very well into a cluster development bylaw, a set of requirements, you might not have neighborhood support. You might have a situation where, for some reason, the neighbors would be more supportive if a higher payment were made for affordable housing, or that might not be the case. But if that were the case, there's no reason why a developer couldn't offer more, the planning board couldn't accept more, and it could be a means of facilitating what would be a good design, and one that the planning board would like to support. So there isn't any one amount that I think is always going to represent the right way to go, but there probably is a method that the planning board can apply. And I just feel strongly that in the case of this development, we're not talking about proposing, asking you to, first of all, you don't have a set amount yet, because you've been talking about it, but you haven't decided what it should be. And if you did, then I'm taking what you've given me so far, and I'm giving you some ways of modifying that amount appropriately, under the circumstances. And you do have the power to do that, the way this bylaw is written. If you were to decide on this payment, this proposed payment, there is, it is not contradictory to the purposes of this bylaw, which talk about open space and good design, or design that fits in with the neighborhood. And I think when you have neighborhood support, that tells you a lot about the fact that this is something that will fit in with the neighborhood. It's not a finished design, it's just a concept for 10 lots. There are certainly other details. So that's, you know, I wrote a much longer memo the first time around, and then I went back and I said, but really, the point here is, you know, what are the mitigating factors that, at least I think, could be applied to this? And why do I think that it's an appropriate way to proceed, under the circumstances, and also under the bylaw? The cluster zoning bylaw has a mechanism for doing this. And I would ask you to seriously consider whether this isn't a reasonable proposal, and to support it, but I'd be happy to discuss it with you more and give you more information, if that helps.
So, this has come before us a couple of times now. I think, I would like to sort of hear where each person's perspective is, and hopefully that would give the applicant, or Ms. McCadrick, on behalf of the applicant, a little bit of direction here. I'm happy to start that. You know, and I think I'll quickly say, I've said it before, but you know, I'll quickly say that while the intent of the bylaw, as for the cluster zoning, as it was written in 1971, was, has various different purposes. In 2014, town meeting went, made it very clear that affordable housing should be one of those, and that was a very recent vote. So I think the affordable housing component is an important part of the bylaw. And in this case, one lot is required. My opinion, we looked at, I'm not sure where the $141,000 came from, but I have, I have a sheet in front of me from Tim that concluded $187,000. So I'm just gonna work from that number, and then we can, you know, we can discuss it. But, you know, the 187 number that I have, all things being equal, on a project that has between 10 and 15 units, I think that's the right number. On this particular project, with all of the history, I was probably, I think I said last time, willing to just reduce it down to 100,000, because of all of the history and the fact that the neighborhood supports it. Sitting here just now, I did just quickly look at the 187,000 and ran it through some of what Ms. McCadrick had put before us. I looked at the 40%. I was looking at that more as a concession to the neighborhood, as a way to sort of combine her A and B, to sort of say, as a concession to the neighborhood, we're gonna go ahead and give him 10% for the lots he's not getting. That got us to 112,000, and then if we got him, gave him 10% for hardship, we're back to that $100,000 number. So from my perspective, you know, either way works for me, but I still believe that the payment, it needs to be in that $100, excuse me, $100,000 range. So that's my perspective. I think...
Can I just get a clarification? That's not relative to my speaking on the topic, but just understanding the basics of where we're starting this thing from. Are we saying $189,000 is the price of one of these 10 lots?
No. So I'll run through that quickly for the public, too. Tim presented this probably a few months ago. Essentially, we used the average assessed land value in Milton, excuse me, average assessed property value in Milton, of $604,000. We then, then we looked at the average assessed land value only, which was $259,000 rounding up.
$298,569.
Sorry, $298, sorry, yep.
It's about half.
So the ratio of assessed land value to the total assessed value was 49.4%. We then looked at the maximum affordable sales price for a home in Milton to count as affordable, and that was $255,000.
$225.
Sorry, I need my glasses on. Yeah, I don't have my glasses on. I forgot them in the car. And then the maximum, so 49.4% of that $225,000 is $111,213. So that's the affordable land price.
So if I bought an affordable house, I would assume that the land would be assessed for relatively $11,000.
Exactly. And so the difference between the average assessed value and the maximum affordable sales price was $379,000. So that's the, that's the 604, $604,000 minus the $225,000. So that's 379,044, that you would need to come up with in order to come up with an affordable home. So what we were saying is that if the 49.4% ratio is applied to that, you get to $187,355.21, and that's where that number came from. It was a formula that Tim derived for us to calculate.
It's the price of lot, it's not the price of one of those 10 lots.
It's actually the supplemental amount of money that the Affordable Housing Trust would need to have to buy, which they could then, to be able to buy an affordable lot for $111,213. That's where the calculation is.
So we're starting at $189?
I'm starting.
No, no, I understand.
$187.
$187, right. So that's to clarify. Thank you for, that was a good clarification. Cheryl, do you wanna, we'll go around, I mean, I'm happy to just go around and let people speak, and then Ms. McCadrick can ask questions, or we can kind of figure out where to go from there.
Marian, were you thinking that the $149 was the calculation that Tim had come up with, rather than the $180?
Yes, I got that from a much earlier meeting.
Okay.
And I also, I'm so confused, but, I mean, I find this confusing. Let me, okay, go ahead and finish, and I'll be able to comment.
All right. Because what I'd like to say is, first of all, thank you for taking a stab at a way arriving at a calculation that's particular to this site, because I agree, I agree with your four means, or your four reduction items. So I agree, because of my experience, if you're 10 lots and you're 10 to 15, you know, you are having a higher burden, because you're at the lowest threshold. So I do think a discount for that makes sense. I'm not certain that 40%... I'm not certain that 40% is the right amount for that, but I appreciate that you took a stab at how to calculate it. So I'm actually, I'm pretty much okay with that. The reduction for neighborhood support because of the history of it, not just because there's neighborhood support, I think is important here, because there is unique history here, and I think that's appropriate. And I think, again, the sort of, all the different scenarios, you know, the original being three units here, I think that that is an important factor, too, and I do think that that's worth, worthy of a reduction. So, did I miss one? Yeah, so there were three, not four. And so my thought, though, was that you, the total amount of reduction, you know, going from 149 down to 89 was too great. So if we could say that.
61.
Sorry, to 61, yeah.
Going down by 89.
Going down by 89, sorry. Going down to 61 is too low. So I guess, I'm not certain that it has to be 100, but I think 61 is too low. So if we started at the higher number, you would be higher than 61, and you could apply your, you know, the same percentages to it, and you'd end up somewhere probably closer to 100. So I don't know, Tim, if you have a calculator handy to do that?
I can do it right now.
Okay.
Well, I can do that, and then do you want, do I move on April?
Yeah, so that's my, those are my thoughts.
So my thoughts are, thank you for doing this, because at the last meeting, we were sort of, I don't think we had a very clear response to you, other than throwing numbers out. But if we start at 187, and we get to 100, I think that's a 47% reduction. I agree there should be concessions, given the history of the project and all of the efforts that the neighborhood has put in and the developer has put in to come together, but I still, my original thought was that 100,000 seemed fair, and I think, given some of the calculations here, if they're adjusted to 149, I still think that it sounds fair.
So you said you think it's still?
I think 100,000 is a fair amount of money.
Mike? First of all, I agree with what some of the previous board members have said, in the fact that you've made an effort, because it's very, it's very abstract, apparently, at this point. But the only thing that I really agree on is the, the, between 11 and 14 lots, you'd still only have to have one, so yeah, yeah, you are suffering a bigger burden than a guy that gets to build 14 lots and only has to contribute one. But beyond that, I don't, I don't understand, well, I find the 10% that you applied for that first reduction kind of abstract in a way, but that's, you know, you tried to apply something. I don't understand how the neighbors' positive input or previous efforts to develop the site, in effect, relate to the Affordable Housing Trust. I don't, I don't know why the Affordable Housing Trust should benefit or suffer because the neighbors think it's a good idea, or a pretty good idea, or not a good idea. And I don't know why, the fact that the developer or the landowner tried to develop something there earlier and didn't succeed in it, why the Affordable Housing Trust should suffer by that. I don't understand the relationship. If I'm sitting over at the Affordable Housing Trust and saying, the neighbors think it's great, if the neighbors think it's fantastic, what are you going to tell them? You don't give us anything?
Well, we're not proposing nothing.
I don't understand the relationship.
We're not proposing nothing.
And again, I don't understand the relationship. If he tried to do something there once, twice, five, 10 times, if he tried to develop something there six times and failed, I'm over at the Affordable Housing Trust, why does that mean he doesn't have to give you anything? Maybe you should make an effort to fail a couple of times, and he won't even have to do it. I don't understand how it relates.
I'd like to hear all the comments, but I do have a response. I don't know if it will help you, but.
The first one I understand, maybe, maybe it's my mind, I think very mathematically, and the first one, I understand the math there, but the other ones are abstract, and I don't even understand, after them being abstract, how they really relate.
Well, I've always felt that the payment is to be determined on the basis of all the circumstances, all the relevant circumstances, and that trying to do a formula is probably The $100,000 figure, I think is justifiable. Problem is that I think the developer says the $100,000 figure doesn't work for me. And that's a problem. It's a problem because if it, if it doesn't, and we insisted on it, it could be, I mean, it might have caused the project to have to be changed into presumably a 40B development. So I, I do think that the payment is a payment to be determined on all the circumstances, and modification of the requirement for a lot, the zoning says that we can modify if we find that the modifications are needed to enable the application to go forward. And we know that a modification is necessary, because the developer isn't going to provide an affordable lot. We have some consensus that $100,000 seems like a reasonable figure, and we have some input that $100,000 may not be doable. And of course, if it's not doable and doesn't get done, the Affordable Housing Trust gets nothing. So I was just getting back to my pilot program for the PVC pipe, which I think is worth Admittedly, we have to persuade the DPW director, because I don't think that we should, we should be telling the DPW director how to run his, how to run his department. But PVC pipe has a history, and I think is probably okay. Now, I, I think we probably could do a pilot program for PVC pipe, which should be worth $25,000, isn't that right?
That was the estimate, yes.
What?
That's the savings if you use PVC pipe.
So if we take the 100 and say we're going to do the pilot program, if we possibly can, we're within striking distance of a figure that, that does seem, seem.
Yes, you are within.
Reasonable to the, something with the, I would say that the attorney for the developer probably wouldn't have come in with a 61.5 figure if, if that was not going to be acceptable to the developer. So.
Well, it seems like we're about, if we, if it's $25,000, and we're at 61.5, we're $13,500 apart from the consensus you speak towards.
I just, I feel, I don't know why in the conversation we always have to feel as though we're under threat.
Because we often are.
Well, I have a.
I mean, we personally aren't, we live somewhere else.
Maybe you could elaborate on this, but there's no parameters around 41B developments? I mean, it's my, my understanding of 40B, that there should be public transportation adjacent, there should be amenities and walking distance. I mean, so you're going to tell me that in the middle of the Blue Hills or something, that the state's going to come in and say, sure, we'll give you, go ahead and do what you want with that way.
Go out to Harvard, Mass. in a apple orchard, attached townhouses, no public transportation, an earlier project, but it happens, it happens. And to think that somehow they're going to say, oh, what a beautiful site, we won't have, we won't approve this site, is not the way it works. I mean, 40B is the reason an awful lot of development goes on, because it is a real threat. And, go.
Well, I just want to maybe take it back to the, the project proponent's attorney, his comment suggested 61.5 based on a number she thought to be the one that we had arrived at. We have the 189, was it?
Something like that.
187 figure, and I, Brian ran the calculation, if you use the same deductions, I mean, not everyone necessarily agreeing on that yet, but just, I'll run it through, that would be 80,000. So we're looking at 61, and people suggested 100, and we've looked at, and how many years of process on this, Marian?
Well, the land first became available in 2005, so it's 11 years in terms of the open space development. I think that was 2011 when that started.
So we're looking at a delta, $40,000 on something where the neighbors have invested a significant time and money, where the developer and the property owner have done the same. And I feel as if, if we're looking at what's really a good outcome would be, you know, to have this development go forward in a way that we think is the best it can be for this particular set of circumstances, and we actually, we're going to be getting increased tax revenue into the town with this new development. So I think it's not worth having this thing get thrown back into disarray over $40,000. So I'm, would like to suggest that the 80,000, using these set of formulas and deductions, be considered by the developer. I mean, that's my suggestion to my colleagues here.
So, to Mike's comment, I'm kind of sick of being threatened by 40B constantly, too. And I've only been on the board for three months, so I can't imagine how you all feel. But, and I keep saying it, but I'm going to say it again, that until we start either creating affordable units or finding a path forward on affordable units to get out from under this consistent threat, we're not making, it's a consistent threat, we're not making any progress, we're not helping the town, because every neighborhood could be subject to the same threat tomorrow. And so that's why I feel so strongly about these, about these payments, because I feel like we have to make some meaningful, meaningful steps forward. I mean, I, I'm frankly unmoved by the idea that it costs the developer a lot of money to develop, that's the business. And I feel like, don't get into the development world if you don't have the resources to pursue it. We've heard this on other projects, we've heard it on the ice house, they don't want to do any work, they don't have any money, then don't be a developer. I understand this history here. I also understand that this project has been negotiated, to Cheryl's earlier point, with the neighborhood, which now requires a wetlands bridge as an alternative access, which is driving up the development cost, which is probably eating into the profits, which is what this guy is now saying, oh, I can't make an affordable housing payment because I got to build this wetlands bridge. There's an alternate access, perhaps, that's a way. I'm not, I'm not objectionable at all to the idea of PVC pipe, I've worked on a number of, there's a number of towns that use PVC pipe. It sounds great, maybe we can try it now and maybe apply it to other projects. And if that can make this work, great. But I really don't think we should keep going above and beyond, trying to avoid people contributing to the Affordable Housing Trust, when this is our only mechanism, that we control. Then we have, we can work on potentially friendly 40Bs, although that is a very, very complicated process, that we really don't have the capacity to pursue under our current structure. Or we can just allow some of these very large 40B projects to go up and get the units that we need, and buy ourselves a few years. But there's only so many paths forward, and if we don't take advantage of the few that we have, we're doing a disservice to the community.
Can I just come out on the affordable housing piece of this? If we, in fact, want to be serious about making a dent in the affordable housing, this board needs to take up inclusionary zoning as a matter that's going to be applied. Now it's piecemeal, it's going on certain kinds of projects, but not all. And this board and the Board of Selectmen need to get serious about implementing aspects of the housing production plan. There's been a lot of work done on it, and we can't expect a 10 lot development to take the lead on creating a lot of affordable housing units. I think that we have to be serious about how we're going to produce affordable housing on a much broader basis than thinking about the cluster bylaws the way to do it. That's my personal opinion.
I agree with all of your comments, except for the last one. Because it's the only tool we have today. And I think that we should talk about some type of inclusionary zoning bylaw, and there's a variety of different ways to pursue that.
It seems to me that sometimes the developments that have come about in town that would be perfect, of prime locations for affordable housing, don't even, you know, approach the subject. But then, when we get into estates, you know, very rural areas of town, and it becomes, this is what we're going to do, or else.
All the wrong places.
The reality of 40B is it limits you to, I think, a 12% profit before you have to start sharing your revenues. It takes three years, it's not a fun ride. But it is a mechanism, and, you know, if this went forward as a 40B, I don't know if I agree that the Affordable Housing Program gets nothing, it gets units, and it doesn't, it would also theoretically get a one-year stay on a future 40B project. So I'm not advocating for a 40B project here, but I'm just addressing the realities of the situation. So, you know, we're, this project is not going to solve our 40B problem, but it is going to be a step, this board making a statement that we are going to be serious about affordable housing. I don't agree, I do agree with Cheryl, that we, we can't rely on this as our only tool, we'll take, we would never get there.
I agree.
I don't know that the, the amount of development area in Milton and its relative numbers are ever going to get there.
We need 400 units.
Right.
453, I think, right?
453.
Yeah, so round up to five.
But if you make modest steps.
If you're one here, it's only 452.
But I'd like to conclude my comments on this, that I'm, I'm right where Cheryl's at, I mean.
Actually, technically, you need an extra one if you do 10.
The number that Cheryl threw out there is certainly right in the ballpark. And the comments I made are more to logic than they are dollars in reality. I don't understand the logic, but.
So I'm not sure what.
If I want to get something to $100,000, and I explain it down to 60 somehow, that's, that's fine, but.
I'm not sure what you're looking for from the board.
Whatever.
You know, I think you've heard all of our various opinions.
Thanks for plugging for a figure.
And I think we've given you various figures, but I'm not sure we even have a, you know, I'm not sure, we don't have anything to vote on, so.
Well, you, you know, if you, if you were willing to, I would ask you to try to reach agreement on the particular, the one particular condition that's in the cluster zoning bylaw for this payment in lieu of, that in principle, that you would, you might consider, or you would consider allowing a payment in lieu of creating the lot, number one, number two, that the payment would be X. We haven't submitted an application, there are all kinds of other requirements that we would have to go through, the board has to agree to, but this one has been so difficult to get a handle on, because your discussion really has encompassed some varying figures for different, I mean, that's just the truth, that I just haven't been able to get any idea, really for sure, what, what you might require.
Well, I think you've heard between 80 and 100.
I understand that, but I'm.
You're hearing the PVC pipe. My other, the concern I would have about giving you a commitment on a figure tonight is that you're asking for a number of other waivers, and some of those other waivers come at a significant cost if we were to not agree to them. So the roadway width, the sidewalks, all of those things have a cost applicable to them. So, you know, I'm not sure how tight the numbers are on the project, but if we agreed to your 60, but we made you go to a roadway width or do a sidewalk, I'm not sure if that doesn't kill the project as well. So I think that's one of the challenges I have in giving you a commitment tonight. I think we can sit here and tell you, you're hearing 80 to 100 is a great, is a good number, but there's a lot of other items on your, on your waiver list.
But the flip side is, you could be saving a lot of money in some different waivers.
She could, exactly. So that's the other poor part of it. We may be able to save you money somewhere else, and that number could go higher, so.
But I think, part, I'm sorry, part one, I think I would be agreeable to a contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust in lieu of affordable housing in it.
Definitely.
Yes, I agree with that.
However, I'm not comfortable voting on specific. However, I'm not comfortable voting on specifics of any development proposal until we have a public hearing.
It sounds like we're... As far as this whole situation, it sounds like we're doable. It would sound to me anyways that...
I mean, I...
It sounds like anybody's that far apart.
If the board would not mind, there's one other comment I'd like to add. I think you... One of you... One of the board members did reference this, but it isn't... This isn't a statistical formulation that I tried to come up with. The numbers that I applied to the factors are. And, you know, there are any number of ways that you can do that. And I'm here for the applicant, so yes, I put forward a number that I felt was manageable for the applicant at this time. That doesn't mean, you know, it has to be this number. We want to know what the board is likely to require. The reason that cost becomes a factor with this development is that the original proposal for a three-lot development required access from an existing right-of-way from Hillside Street. That's an existing right-of-way, 30 feet wide, that would have been relatively inexpensive, although the road would have still had to be extended, and it's expensive to create a road along right... There were long discussions, great deal of neighborhood input, and the immediate neighbors in particular were very, very opposed to the use of the existing right-of-way. And we tried, in the context of that hearing, and I did represent the applicant for that, to come up with some kind of way of solving that problem. But the developer felt it was impossible to create a roadway through wetlands over an intermittent stream, a long roadway, if you're only creating three lots. This simply would be too costly. And so... And that was the issue. There were many other things discussed, but the real issue, I believe, and I think people would agree with this generally, was access and form of access to that development. That's why it failed, because we couldn't agree on the form of access. The neighborhoods... Neighbors, the immediate neighbors would not support it. And so after that discussion, of course, did go in different directions, but they were all aimed at trying to find a way to pay for the road if you come in from Ford Ranch Road. And they were much more dense proposals. And I really don't like to see this discussion framed as the threat is 40B or else we do this. The point is that we've... That in looking at options to develop the property, a number of things have been looked at. I mean, you know, condominium development might make some sense here because you could keep, you know, the elements of the development closer together. You could create an onsite septic system just for the development. That would be not a 40B, but say a 40 unit. But anyway, the neighborhood simply doesn't want that, doesn't support it, and doesn't feel that it fits in with the single-family and rural development style. And it's a very unique neighborhood with a lot of older houses, a lot of new houses. But it does retain... It's so difficult now to keep that feeling in a neighborhood. It does gradually get eroded because of new development and new housing, but still there's some of that feeling in Hillside Street. Neighbors really felt that this should be a single-family. And for a long time, the owner and the developer said, it's just impossible. You know, financially, it just doesn't work. We can't do this access and do single-family houses. But finally, when the proposal came about for the 10 lots, or it was between 10 and 12 lots when the entire site was there, without the A&R lot being taken out necessarily, finally, they reached, you know, a meeting of the minds, and it was for up to 12 lots, but taking out the A&R lot. It was 11 lots. All the lots perked. But the developers feels it's a much better proposal at 10 lots. The neighborhood supports that. The Neighborhood Association has written a letter supporting that. The cost of access is a very important factor in this development. It may or may not be relevant to this issue of what should be paid for an affordable lot, but it is relevant to the neighborhood and to the developer. It costs more to access the site this way. And so you wouldn't be able to do this if you weren't in Hillside Street, probably, because lots here are likely to be more valuable. So you can pay for this cost of access with 10 lots. At least, that's the estimate. That's the pro forma. The neighborhoods looked at costs, the developers looked at costs. So a lot of work went into that, and no one really had any idea what would happen with the affordable lot requirement or the payment. We just didn't know. There was nothing to go by. There were no developments that had made payments. One development that had proposed one never went forward in lower mills. It wasn't be able to proceed financially. But that was $50,000, and that was for 22 units. So that was... And that was years ago, but that was a guideline of sorts, I suppose, not necessarily a precedent. So that's just a little bit more detail. As I said, I wrote an eight-page memo the first time around, but I thought it was too long, and I thought it probably went into too much detail. But I understand when you look at something like this, that you might say, well, you know, what does this really have to do with it? What I'm trying to do is to explain to you how... How... Well, I'm trying to outline a method, and I think you've all agreed that possibly some of this could be a method that the planning board could use. The end result is unknown because it depends on how you weigh these factors, and you might have other factors that you would also think were important. If you can't... I'd love to have... I'd like you to give me a number. If you're not willing to do that, well, you've given me certainly more guidance than I've had in the past. I can take that back. We can continue to work. I don't think an application is going to be filed until the developer feels that he can manage whatever the payment is likely to be. Even, you know... Let's take the example of the pipe, the pipe issue. You know, this is a decision that is a DPW-type of topic. I think the planning board saying that they would support the idea of trying something like this on a pilot basis is helpful. So that's great. You've had a discussion. So far, I haven't heard any feedback from planning board members that they think that's a terrible idea. So I can go back to the Board of Selectmen and to the DPW director and say, well, you know, the planning board thinks this might be worth trying on a pilot basis, and maybe this development is the time to try. And indeed, that would realize some savings. As far as the other waivers or modifications that I've talked about, I've listed them since March. You haven't... You won't be able to decide until you have the application before you, and there will be discussion. But any information you can provide... If you think one of those is impossible to achieve, then I'm... I would like to hear about it. That's why I came into the last meeting, and I went through all the waivers, all the modifications again. And I did get some feedback, and we had some discussion, you know. This is a development that I would like to see succeed personally because I think it's the best solution at this point for the neighborhood, for the town. So I would like to do as much preliminary work on it as possible. And I think I have the support of the applicant in that. I have the support of the neighborhood, that we do as much spade work ahead of time as we can. And I understand at the same time that until we file an application, you're not going to make a decision. You're going to make your decision in the context of the public hearing process. That's the way it has to work.
But the applicant isn't going to file an application until he knows or has a solid idea of what might be his contribution. So by saying, you know, you've got that circular situation, well, we're not going to tell you until you file an application. I'm not going to file an application until I have a pretty solid idea of what the board's going to require.
So are we suggesting that the 80 to $100,000 range, having that number, is going to kill this project, a $20,000 unsure amount?
Why didn't we say 80?
That's what Cheryl suggested. And I think that's what Mike said he thought was reasonable.
Yeah.
And Brian did, too.
And 80 is...
No, I said 100.
Oh, you did?
And I've said 80 to 100.
So we said a range.
And we've got a $25,000 piping issue that might get you there.
Yeah, but I agree with what April's saying. I mean, this is going to be...
You're going to walk away over 20 grand?
10 houses, 10 houses, you know. You're talking in the neighborhood, $8 to $10 million they're going to be spending here. I mean, $20,000 is going to kill the project, and somebody didn't start out planning this project very well to start with, so...
Well, I think it goes back...
So if 80 to 100 ain't good enough to resolve his thought process, then I think he's in a tough spot as it is.
Well, and it goes back to what Brian says. It's a whole combination of things that we're going to need to weigh with one another. So if all of the other requests, lack of sidewalk, roadway width, et cetera, et cetera, are granted, then that might sway more towards 100. But if something like one of these... Maybe the roadway width goes to 20 instead of 18, and there's additional costs associated with that, well, would that weigh it down to the 80? I mean, these are factors that we can consider, as Alex said earlier, so, you know, the board can consider, so what makes the project doable and what might not make it doable? And, you know, we can all speculate about, you know, what the numbers are, but I know from the work with my clients that it's the risk that's the hardest thing for them to gauge, and the longer it goes, the risk, you know, for it continues to cost. I mean, there's a cost associated with carrying things for the longest time. And I know that, for example, other communities, when they... If you're looking at... You know you have some things you want to achieve, you make the process, and you look at your zoning, and you look at ways to modify it so that you take some risk out, so that you actually get some developments that you want to attract. One of the first things that I said, I think, when I started getting involved in this planning board and the master plan is, think about what you want in town, and then see what you need to do, perhaps, to your planning and your bylaws to help achieve that. So, you know, we've talked about, in the context of other developments, some of our regulations, and whether it's the pipe, or it's the roadway width, or whether it's the sidewalks, maybe these are things that need to be looked at. But until they're looked at, we have particular projects, and it's going to affect the cost. So if we went in and said that, no, every one of those things, we're not going to approve, and we want 100,000, maybe it would kill the deal. So it is, I think, something that's hard to put an exact figure to today until we look at all of the factors together. But I think the range is good.
I think we've narrowed your risk profile to $20,000.
Right, exactly.
You know, let's bring forward an application and if it feels like we'll get there.
I think that's good. I don't think, with all due respect to what you're getting at, Cheryl and I agree. I think the fact that the neighbors have participated so much, you know, positively in this project, I mean, and they pursued the developer to try to sit down and say, let's make this work, that it's said tremendous things positive about this project, but the 80 to 100, like, say, a 20-grand delta is like... But I was going to start out and say, with due respect to what you said, I don't think we want to... Again, I don't know how the Housing Trust relates to whether we let you have a sidewalk or not, or whether you use... I don't think they should hinge on each other. But I don't see why, going back with the figure, you know, I don't negotiate on a daily basis, but I negotiate subcontract quite a bit. And if I come in saying I can give you 61.5, I know I can give you more, because I'm not going to commit with the highest possible figure I could give you would make the project work, because I'd be a fool to do that. So we're now at 80 to 100, so that should be plenty of information to go back and say, okay, let's keep moving.
I mean, just one more point on this whole discussion. I want to hear what the public says. I want to... I know that I've represented several times that the neighbors are in support of it, and I have no reason not to believe you, Marion. I think you're a very honest person, but I want them to come in. Maybe they have feelings about the payment.
The neighbors would have been happy to come in.
Maybe they have... So, I mean, I'd like to get the public process going before we render...
It's just, it's always the...
I don't think we need to hear... I think it's a public process. At some point, we have to file an application. I think that's what you're hearing from the board.
Well, sure, I understand that. You know, I just have been trying to explain that this particular factor, because it was undefined...
Well, I think we've given you a pretty good definition.
Was very difficult to work with.
From 80 to 100. I think that's a pretty solid range.
The positive response of the neighbors, in my mind, is always outrageously highly significant. I mean, if you come back here and said it had to be 75, the neighbors would, please let this project go forward, and you could explain the hardship of why it couldn't be 80, it has to be 75, then I'm sure we could deal with it.
Well, I think that saying 80 to 100 is okay.
It's better than not having any guidance.
Better than saying nothing.
Absolutely. And that's essentially why I'm here tonight, is to try to get some guidance. You spend a lot of time on it. I've gained some insight. I've also... What can I say? There's not much more I can say even about this topic at this point, except that...
I didn't understand your logic, but I appreciate that you got the ball rolling.
And I'm sorry that I didn't understand the number that you were beginning with. I do apologize for that, but that number goes way back many meetings, several meetings in...
Well, at least if you use that number, the 80 to 100 is just viable under what's under your...
That is correct. So thank you. I will take this back. We'll look at the meeting, I'm sure, again, and hopefully we'll have some positive progress.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So for the first time since town meeting, we have a full board in front of us, and we can, at last, do our voting. So what is the board's pleasure this evening?
I would like to nominate Brian to continue on as our chair.
Sounds like a good idea.
Is that a second?
Any further discussion?
No, I commented the great... Like the experience that Alex had, but... No, I think you've done a good job, excellent job.
Okay, thanks. Well, all in favor?
Aye.